Hi and welcome to a special edition of Newsmakers TV. I'm your host, Jerry Roberts. Tonight, a roundtable conversation with three candidates for the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Education, also known as the school board. There are five members who sit on the school board, and in the November 6 election, two of those seats will be on the ballot. There are eight candidates running for the two seats, and tonight we'll meet three of them. You got all that? It'll be a quiz right after the show. And we'll speak with four other contenders on a second program. Joining us now in alphabetical order and identified by their ballot listings are Ricardo Cota, middle school teacher, Bonnie Raisen, retired, and Jill Rivera, businesswoman and parent. Another candidate, Jim Gribble, who is on the ballot as an educator, researcher, and author, is currently working in Finland and was unable to be with us. Welcome to all of you, and thanks for being with us.
Thank you.
Ricardo, let me start with you. The bylaws of the school board say the members are elected for this purpose: to provide leadership and citizen oversight of district operations, to ensure compliance with the law and relevant public policies. It's a pretty general statement, but let me ask you to be very specific in answering this question. Within those parameters, what do you want to do on the board? What's the specific priority you want to be able to point to at the end of your term that you've accomplished?
Right now, I'd probably say the biggest issue is dealing with school safety, and then also making sure that our marginalized students are really achieving, so closing that achievement gap with our most marginalized students in the district.
All right. Bonnie, what's your biggest priority?
I am always looking at the fiscal responsibility of boards and councils and commissions, and I would like to make sure that the monies we receive from the federal government and the state government and any local funding are spent on increasing the level of education of children K through 12.
All right. Jill, top priority?
Top priority, I have two. I would like to see greater transparency with regard to budget items, and I would also like to see, to Ricardo's point, the achievement gap shortened, because I've seen a decline, especially in math and science scores and performance over my 18 years being involved in the school system with my children.
Okay. Let's talk about your backgrounds a little bit. Bonnie, what in your personal experience, how involved have you been with education issues with the district? What's your perspective from a personal standpoint?
Well, I was born and raised here and went all through the public school system until I was in high school, and then I attended a not, I did not want to, but I was asked to please bend, and I attended a private school. I have seen, as a result, the benefits of both, so, you know, I'm grateful for that. I am concerned very much about the low test scores that the Santa Barbara School District seems to be showing right now, and I'm wondering why. And I'm also interested in the success or non-success of Common Core, for example. I do not think that any-
All right, we'll get to those issues in a second. I just, I want to talk about personal experience. What lens, Jill, do you look at this job through?
Well, I look at it through, I have a business background, as you know, and with that, I have a skill set. I deal in financial community. So with my business background, what I do in my job is I look for opportunities to add value and improve operational efficiencies, so I would take that kind of lens and apply it to the school board. In addition, as I mentioned earlier, I have three children that have gone through the school system, and I have volunteered, I'm a member of the PTA, I've been a treasurer in the elementary school at Roosevelt School, and I was also served as VADA Board President for three years. So I have a lot of experience, but it's a combination of being on the ground at the school and also with my business background.
All right. Ricardo, you teach where down in Santa Paula?
Yes, correct, I do teach in Santa Paula.
So what's your perspective and how your personal experience relates to this position?
So I've been in education for about 10 years. I started out as an after-school counselor and worked my way up to director. Then I've been teaching for the last six years, all the subjects: language arts, math, science, and history. And then just this past year, I received a master's in educational leadership as well as an administrative credential, so I'm pretty current as far as what's going on in our schools and education, in the educational field right now.
All right. Okay. Jill, let me start with you this time, and we'll go around on this question. You know, one of the key roles of the board is hiring or firing the superintendent overseeing his or her management. What's your assessment of how Superintendent Kerry Matzouko is doing on a scale of A for excellent, F for failing? What grade would you give him?
Well, at the moment, I, you know, I entered the race. I've been a parent, obviously, but I've gotten really, really interested in the superintendent and what he's doing and the decisions he's making as of late. I would say for now, I would probably give him a C. I was at the board meeting last week where it was brought to our attention in the audience that a program called Just Communities, they were debating the MOU on that, and-
Moran of Understanding.
Right, right. And I was a bit alarmed that this program had been implemented in the schools, and so that was one of the reasons why I mentioned transparency.
Okay. Ricardo, you give grades all the time. What do you give Kerry?
Well, looking, you can just look at the CAS scores, the state assessment scores that this district is receiving, and ever since he has been here, they've kind of plateaued. So I'd probably say he's getting a B-. You know, he hasn't, they haven't gotten worse, but they certainly have not improved, so I think he's probably a B-, and we'll see how students do this year.
All right. Bonnie?
Well, I think there must be tremendous demands on him because, and Jill brought this up, fair communities is, would be the, sort of the opposite of just communities. I think, I think what's happened, and I want to say this in a diplomatic way, but I think that probably trying to reach the lowest common denominator, including children who haven't developed adequate language skills, we perhaps are neglecting, I would think, maybe those who are achieving at higher levels. So I'm just wondering if it isn't, if we aren't neglecting a certain group of children for the sake of the enrichment of others.
All right. Bonnie brings up what's known as the achievement gap. It's been a big problem for a long time, and it's the difference in achievement between Asian and white students and their Latino and African-American peers. And there's a new study, actually, just out this week, that shows the achievement gap in California schools is not closing, and we lag most other states in closing it. Are we doing enough about that? Are we doing the right things? What's your take on it?
Well, I think in order to really close the achievement gap, we have to look at literacy, particularly students that are in third grade, because that is a critical year for students, you know, a predictor of student success. I teach seventh grade currently, seventh and eighth grade, and some of the students that I receive are still reading at a second, third grade level, so it is a statewide epidemic. I would say to close the achievement gap, though, you have to get these students to read, and so I think, you know, if we form these tasks, put teachers on special assignment, they can really, really target these students and get them just to read at grade level, then they would have access to curriculum and all other subject matters and be able to read curriculum at their proper grade level. So really, it's attacking those early, early literacy skills so that they can then access curriculum as they move on through the grade levels.
Now Bonnie, if I hear what you're saying, you think maybe that there's too much, too many resources going to the, to those who are on the low end of the achievement scale and not enough to the high. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Let me think if I can phrase this in a way. Perhaps what I'm saying is, is that it's not really fair to the children who, and I certainly do agree with Ricardo about early reading skills. I don't think we can blame it all on technology, but I also think that at the expense of the children who do read well and who have accomplished basic mathematics, that they should be rewarded in some way. In other words, I think rather than pulling down those who have the skills to match those that don't, is a gross injustice to both groups.
All right. Jill, your experience as a parent, you've seen this close up. What's your take on the achievement gap?
Well, I, I'm very much about merit, and I'm also about individualized attention. I think it's a matter of focus, and I was a volunteer in the classroom to help with literacy intervention, so I personally helped kids learn how to read, and I'm in agreement with Ricardo that we have to address this early in the elementary years, because what we see is kids keep moving up to the next grade, and they keep falling further and further behind. I did a big literacy program, as I mentioned to you during our interview, with the Juvenile Hall of Santa Barbara, and I volunteered to read there, and I also got books donated. And I saw firsthand that a lot of the young people that were in Juvenile Hall were there as a result of having issues at school, because they were not proficient, so that hurt their self-esteem, et cetera. So I believe it's a matter of focus, and so when you look at where money's being spent, I think there are better ways to spend the money than, for instance, on programs like Just Communities. Maybe we could use that instead to address early elementary literacy.
All right. Bonnie, you know, the last time we had a school board election, there were three seats up and only three people decided to run. This time, we got eight people running for two seats, so there's a lot of interest that's been generated around the school district, and I think a lot of it is because of what happened at San Marcos High School last, last winter, when the principal, Ed Behrens, was demoted despite a lot of opposition from the community. 500 parents came out to a meeting. Again, from the bylaws for the board, it says, "The board shall ensure that the district is responsive to the values, beliefs, and priorities of the community." Do you think when the board voted 4 to 1 to get rid of Ed Behrens, it was being responsive to the priorities of the community? You think that was handled well or not?
You know, I can't really make a comment on that, because I followed it superficially in the paper, but I don't really know. That's a tough decision to make, because I understand, from what I read, that a lot of parents came to his defense, so I don't know. And I'm not, I'm not privy to whether or not he had a fair hearing, if he was even allowed to have that.
Okay. Jill, you have a sense of that?
I've talked to a lot of parents, and I'm aware of the Save Our Schools, you know, group that's, that's involved in that.
That came out of the-
Right. And I, I think that something really great came out of it, because we wouldn't probably have eight board members running if it were not for that being a catalyst. And I really appreciate the fact that parents are starting to wake up and see what's really going on, take an active role. I will say I've attended some board meetings, and it seems to me that a lot of the board members are, it's kind of a, they're in the same spirit, same kind of lane, if you will, and maybe that doesn't fairly represent the whole community, because we kind of need diversity in thought and opinions and values on that board. So I think, I think that can be improved. But as far, I wasn't, I'm not a San Marcos parent, so to Bonnie's point, I can't speak to that specifically, but I do know that there were 500 parents that showed up at a board meeting, which, that's a miracle.
I was gonna say, I mean, in your experience, you ever see 500 parents come out for anything?
Other than a back-to-school night.
Back-to-school night. So, I mean, what, did you have a takeaway from that, just, you know, watching it from the outside, whether it was fair or not fair?
Again, I mean, this is a position where we are kind of representing the, we are representing the community, and so, you know, you have to listen to your constituents, and so if they are, you know, asking for this Ed to be saved, we'd have to, I would listen to that if I was, you know, a board member, so that's where I stand on that.
Jill, one of the powers the school board has is to approve or disapprove the petitions for charter schools. We have three charter schools, as you know, in Santa Barbara now. Do you think that authorizing more charter schools is an answer to helping particularly some of the issues we've talked about in terms of the achievement gap? Is that something the board should be more aggressive about doing, do you think?
Well, knowing what it takes to create a charter school, which is really rigorous in terms of regulation and specifics, if there was a really big groundswell and a need for another school, and they were, and it was based on something that was really, you know, that we could discern was a real need for the community, I wouldn't be opposed to it, but it seems to me at the current time that we have plenty of schools for plenty of different parents.
Ricardo, what's your-
Again, if the parents are asking for it, something we can definitely look into, making sure that it is a grassroots charter school and not one of these for-profit that seem to be popping up. So again, if the parents are asking for it, definitely would listen to that.
You think that we need more choices in our school district, Bonnie?
Yes, I definitely do. And one of the questions I posed at the workshop in San Onofre last Monday night, a week ago Monday, was the federal and state mandates that come down to the board. You know, I have not, I have not researched the extent to which they have to influence board decisions, but that would be something, you know, that I would be most interested in, because if there was any way that we could wrench away some more local control for our own population, I would really be all for that. And I, and I've been thinking a lot about that, you know, I didn't, I don't know how we became so vast in how we allowed children's lives to be governed, you know, ultimately by the federal government and then the state government.
Long story, I think it goes back to Proposition 13.
Yes, yes, yes.
Ricardo, you mentioned in your opening that school safety is a, is a priority for you, and again, that's, you know, something that's, that's in the bylaws of the board that's a, that's a priority. Do you think that the Santa Barbara School District is doing enough, has done enough, you know, with this backdrop of the epidemic of school shootings and violence and things like that? Do you think our kids are safe?
Well, you know, hindsight's always 20/20. I think the district is doing what they can do right now, but as far as moving forward, I think we can, you know, look around the nation, come up with protocols, solutions, procedures when these issues do happen, and then really, you know, pulling on my military background here, it was after review, our action reviews, you know, after something happens, you look at that data-
You did what, you did three tours?
Yes, I did do three tours, two to Iraq and once to Afghanistan.
Thank you for sure.
Thank you. But again, just looking at, you know, after these things, incidents happen, putting, you know, coming together, what went wrong, what went right, and, you know, these incidents of violence are pretty fairly new, you know, maybe, I know it started with Columbine, but recently, you know, you hear about it almost once a week, even today, there was, I think, a couple shootings. So it's just, you know, this is brand new, really, and just working and, working with other communities, working, seeing what other districts are doing, but coming up with comprehensive safety plans that we can keep improving on and just making sure that our students feel safe when they come to school.
Do your students feel safe when they go to school?
Yes, because they know I'm a veteran, and I would never let anything happen to them.
Bonnie, we have a lot of open campuses in, in the Santa Barbara School District. You know, what's your sense? Do you think that we've done enough to protect students?
Do you know what has been uppermost on my mind, and it is a national epidemic, and that's the opioid crisis? Because when I see or watch the school shootings, I, the first thing that crosses my mind is, was he in counseling? Has he, is he, does he use drugs? Media does not talk about that, and yet, our current administration is certainly talking about the opioid crisis. And I, you know, I just wish that people would, I wish that the schools, and I wish that parents, and I wish that those of us that have had some background in the counseling of addicted human beings would pay more attention to the possibilities that opioids may have been behind this, because there's, it's always blamed on something else.
All right. Jill, it's, obviously, as Bonnie points out, a very complicated problem with a lot of different facets. You had, just based on your, you know, kids being in school, you know, what was your fear level there of them going off? Do you think that the district is being, taking a comprehensive approach to this?
Well, I think that there's always room for improvement, and to build on what, what Ricardo and Bonnie said, you have to make assessments and you can always tweak the protocol, but I do know that there is a focus on mental health and social, emotional well-being, particularly after we had experienced such trauma last year with the floods and the fires. And I think a lot of times with the school shootings, you'll find that the individuals involved were on medications that were not stable, and so I think, you know, partnership with the community and mental health is also critical for improving safety in our schools.
So that's a, that's an aspect that you would see, we're probably not, not doing enough, as opposed to just-
We could improve on it. I think that we can improve on it.
Okay. All right. Bonnie, you mentioned the state mandates, and of course, we have the local control funding formula, which channels extra state dollars to schools with the greatest concentration of needy students. You know, one of the disputes about that is that the state superintendent of schools said, "You can take that money," which is, you know, supposed to be earmarked for particular levels of achievement and cohorts, "and use it across the board for salary increases for teachers." Do you think that's a good policy or not?
Well, okay, so a quarter of a million dollars, I have a note here, was spent on Just Communities, and that is bridging the gap between-
Which is, that was the group you brought up, I believe, Jill, yeah.
Yeah, and so, you know, I, I think the monies, I think money should always go to the betterment of the education of the children. I really believe that somehow, and if that means, you see, there again, we have to go back to local control, because if it's earmarked money, then we really don't have a choice.
Well, the superintendent said that the local districts do have that choice. It can go into particular programs, or it can be used for across-the-board salary increases. What's your position on that?
Okay, well, I didn't answer the question, I apologize.
No, that's okay. Well, I will say that I think, you know, the money that's earmarked for Just Communities, if it comes out of that budget to help underserved communities within the school system, there's plenty of better ways to spend that money, in my opinion. But I also think that special education is an area that I think could be improved based on need, and that's another area that, you know, if our kids need help, then we can increase teachers' salary to meet the needs of the children in the school. And I do happen to know that special education is one of those areas that seems to always be coming up short.
Okay. Ricardo, I'm really interested in your take on this, because it seems to me that what happens in schools a lot is the newest teachers, those with the less, least experience, get put into some of the toughest classrooms. Is that the case? And, you know, what do you think about this notion of using local control funding formula money for across-the-board salaries?
Well, I have to backtrack a little bit. So we have what are called professional learning communities, PLCs, and during those, teachers are supposed to collaborate, come up with, for us, assess, common assessments for students to take, and then you're supposed to use that data to drive instruction. So what I would say is using that money is, yes, to pay teachers that actually want to stay extra hours and work and collaborate together, come up with meaningful lessons, looking at the data, how they can improve their instruction. So anybody that, again, wants to stay extra and earn, you know, make a few extra dollars doing that, I don't see a problem with that. But again, you have to stay and put in the work, but I know, at least down in Santa Paula, there's teachers that would be willing to do that, and I know it's, it's actually a better way to spend the money rather than bringing in professionals or people that, so-called experts, because we have, you know, teachers have a lot of experience, and when they collaborate together, they come up with some pretty good ideas. But again, it's just getting them to stay those extra hours to actually put in the work and make meaningful change and having meaningful lesson plans, so that's what I would use the money for.
All right. All right, very good. Well, I'm gonna give you each a minute, if you'd like to make a closing statement to talk directly with the voters, and Jill, why don't you go ahead?
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I've really enjoyed the process so far. I've learned a lot, I've met a lot of really great people, and I will say this, that to the community, we need to be more involved in our local school board, and we need to be paying attention to what's going on, because our community, each one of us has a voice, and we have, we have the power to make our voices heard, and so I really believe, you know, I'm, I'm representing some of the voices in our community, and I think all of us should get more involved in our local school board.
Okay. Bonnie?
And I also agree with what Jill has said. I, myself, was sort of a newcomer to the school board meetings, and I have a grandson at the Santa Barbara High School now, and it was my daughter-in-law's suggestion, and I didn't realize how much I was missing, and I would love to be able to see more people get interested in attending this, the school board meetings, because their children are more than likely part of the school program somewhere. So I'm going to try to be an emissary and carry this message to as many people as I know and get them interested, and I would also hope, and I did not mention this during our discussion, but I feel that the school board meetings are perhaps a little long, a little tedious, and that they could be shortened and run a little bit more on time so that people would not feel they have to spend a long, long time there, so.
All right. Big vote for short meetings, some for that. Ricardo, closing statement?
Okay. Well, this has been a wonderful learning experience for me as well. It's my first time running for any office, and so I would just like to say, you know, I've served my country for four years, and so this would be another way for me to continue to serve my community, do bring some experience to the, you know, six years of classroom experience, but really, you know, working on my top priorities, student safety, or school safety and student safety, closing the achievement gap, and then really just being a voice for students. A lot of times, decisions are made, you know, with adult thinking and never putting their actual, you know, their mindset into the, is this what a student would want? Is this best for students? So again, just being there, being a voice for most marginalized students, and really just being a voice for, for the community, again, listening to what they have to say before making any decisions, and just, you know, listening to all stakeholders and really trying to improve our district, trying to improve our community, and hopefully bring our test scores up and having our students ready for college and career.
All right. Thank you. So we'll leave it there, and on behalf of Newsmakers and the folks at TVSB and the voters of Santa Barbara, first of all, let me express my- voters of Santa Barbara, first of all, let me express my appreciation to each of you, all our candidates, for being here tonight, and even more, I think, for their commitment and the passion and the courage you all display, putting yourself out there as a candidate, which is not, not an easy thing to do. So thanks to Ricardo Cota, to Jill Rivera, Bonnie Raisen, and special thanks to our peerless director, JP Montalvo, to our crew, Ryan, Michael, and Ken, and as always, to our top-ranking, high-powered, high-energy senior executive producer, Hap Freud. Thank you all for watching. We'll see you next time on Newsmakers.